Mayor, before we start, can I say something?
Absolutely.
Um, I still have her hemorrhage in my eye, so I'm gonna stay off camera. Hopefully it'll be fine by the next time we meet, but I don't want to scare everyone here like I scare my teenage daughters.
Well, best of luck on the the healing process.
Thanks. It looks far worse than it is, but it looks bad.
Well, I have total confidence that you're here.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I feel awful.
Well, at this time, it is seven o'clock and we will begin these City Council Successor Agency Brentwood Infrastructure Financing Authority Meeting of July twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two. We do have a quorum, so if we could get a roll call, city clerk.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer?
Here.
Councilmember Rary?
Here.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Here.
Mayor Bryant?
Here. So we do have a full council tonight. If you could join with me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we will open public comments, and I'll turn it to you, Margaret.
At this time, the public is permitted to address the city council on items that are not on the agenda, items listed under presentations, informational reports are on the consent calendar, request for future agenda items, new requests. Please save your comments for any other items that are on the agenda for that part of the meeting when you'll have the opportunity to provide them. I received no written public comments for public comment that was submitted prior to the meeting. If you wish to speak under public comment, please raise your hand using the Zoom feature. I'll call your name if provided and I make you to speak. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person. Your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. While we encourage your comments, state law prevents the city council discussing items that are not on their meeting agenda, and if appropriate, staff will follow up on them. I do have one hand raised. I'll go ahead and share the timer screen. And I'll call on Danny Dorman. Mr. Dorman, go ahead.
Great. Thank you very much, everyone. Um, wow, must be a slow day in the neighborhood when I'm the only one talking. I just wanted to clarify a few things. There are about seven hundred and fifty people who work for Brentwood, whether it is the city manager or the entry-level janitor. They all fall under staff. And so when I rail against staff, I'm not railing against the entire staffing groups. And if any one of staff ever thought that way, I sincerely apologize. There are particular members of staff who I honestly don't have the faith and trust in what it is they do for the city. They know who they are. And I'll just leave it at that. Uh, second, of course, is water. I sat here and realized that sometimes numbers are just too big for people to encompass. When I gave that number in the last meeting of seventy-five million gallons a month, that's a huge number. And I think it's so huge that people don't believe it. But the math is simple. You take the number of new homes that are getting ready to be built, you take the topmost of tier one, which I can't imagine anyone in Brentwood actually meeting that, but you take that five thousand gallons. You multiply it. It's that answer. And I'll be honest, if I, if we had the ability to shift twenty-five million gallons of water a month to our ag, I think we'd be booming in the agricultural business. But, like I said, it's a number that's too big. I know that the council and the planning commission can only do so much. I know that developers are pushing because it's in their benefit. And it could very well be that I'm railing against the machine, but boy, I'm gonna keep putting it on the record because one day, one day, uh, someone's gonna wake up and realize that water is a finite resource that we all need and not five thousand new homes that only a few people need. Thank you very much. I hope you guys have a blessed evening.
Thank you. I have no additional hands raised.
Thank you. At this time then, we will close public comments and we'll move into informational reports from council members, committees, liaisons, and staff. And we'll begin with Councilmember Mendoza.
Let me unmute, let me go here. Hello, since the last time we've meet, I have attended actually two California elected meetings. Um, one of them was reviewing the arena process and how, um, Southern California actually got an extension because no one is really making their their, um, date to meet the, their submission. I also extend, attended another Cali meeting that was all around, um, the math that they use to create our numbers that we need to build and just the faults and the equation overall and a lawsuit around that. I attended a Cal Cities meeting with, um, former mayor Tubbs from Stockton, who I think is fabulous, and why he ran and all of the good things that came with running, including like he was a newly elected, straight out of Stanford, shocked that fellow council people didn't read the agendas. I attended a California, a livable California meeting where we reviewed a bunch of bills, so always housing bills. Um, I encourage everyone out there, if you're anti these housing bills, please email Senator Glazer, Assemblywoman Lori Wilson, and, um, the one running for Assembly, which has a little portion of Brentwood, which is Josh Harder. We had our Housing Element meeting, and I'm really glad that we did not end up with a four hundred percent, um, over our allocated number. We are going to be about fifteen to twenty percent over the allocated number, and then also, um, listen to the planning commission meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Meyer?
Thank you. Um, had some discussion with a resident who was very concerned about a dangerous intersection in District Two. And I have to say, um, Captain Silva and the BPD response was top-notch. Um, this woman was incredibly appreciative of the, of the attention, uh, to this complaint and um, so far it looks like it's been resolved pretty well, but I just have to give a shout out to BPD for that. Um, heard from two different nonprofits reaching out about potential space within the city and connected them with, um, Darren Galen and Bruce Mulder. Um, talked with three nonprofits about, um, youth resources and mental health concerns. It was, um, Village Community Resource Center, A Brighter Day, and People Who Care, and shared some of that resource information with Tim. Um, watched the, the planning commission meeting, had a meeting with Amy Tilly with the Downtown Brentwood Coalition. Just kind of learned a little bit more about her vision, which I thought was amazing. I think she's doing a fantastic job. Also attended the California, um, Alliance of Local Electeds to hear about the state audit of the Rena numbers and the Coalition of Cities HCD Audit Lawsuit. Um, and then attended the Housing Element Council meeting and had a meeting with the chief regarding a rescue vehicle. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rary?
Yes, thank you. Since last time we met, um, I spoke with a resident regarding affordable housing. She had seen the article um, and or had heard from a friend that, uh, there was gonna be Section Eight housing. Um, so I explained the difference between what we're building, which is affordable housing for a variety of income levels. And that it cannot be Section Eight, and I, I gave her a, an example, like for four people, I think it was between you, you could have an income level of, I think, six to a hundred and eleven, um, uh, thousand dollars, and she says, well, I, I, I can fit into that. Or I know, she says, I don't even make that much. I said, well, there's a different level, you know, that you might be able to fit into. And so I forwarded her all the information on it as well as give it, gave her the links to, um, our website and to, uh, give her information regarding our affordable housing, um, uh, department. So, um, I also attended the John Marsh Historic Trust Board Meeting. We are going to have the Heritage Day again out at the House on October fifteenth, and so we're in the plans for that. Uh, I had a meeting with Chief Hanson, uh, to discuss items that will be coming up on, uh, the next, the next agenda, and then, um, I, I had a conference, uh, with a consultant regarding, uh, one, an employee evaluation. I attended the Housing Element, uh, meeting that we had last week and spoke with two residents regarding the Open Space Initiative, uh, that is on tonight's agenda. And that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Yeah, at this time, um, I've had no committee meetings and, um, I have nothing else to report on. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Since the last time we met, uh, I attended the Housing Element meeting until I had to leave for a, another, uh, conflicting, uh, meeting that I have been appointed to from the, uh, Mayor's Conference, the Airport Land Use Commission, uh, where, uh, the Airport Land Use Commission, uh, wrapped up two years of working to, uh, make all of the ordinances, uh, regulations, uh, federal, state, and local, uh, all aligned together uh, so that we accomplished that. Uh, I also attended the East Contra Costa Trans Plan, uh, meeting as well as a BART meeting, uh, the State Route Four Bypass, uh, where Sasha Danskiewicz from, uh, Mark Thomas Associates, uh, laid out the future plans, uh, for State Route Four, which do include uh, the expansion of State Route Four south of Balfour, uh, to four lanes. So Brentwood is, is in, in the line to see this work begin, uh, very soon. Uh, in addition to that, I, I attended the East Contra Costa Regional Fee and Financing Authority Board. Uh, that is, uh, also known as ECRFA and got some fantastic news for Brentwood. Uh, during that meeting, uh, ECRFA voted to approve the twelve and a half million dollars to extend Sand Creek Boulevard out to Deer, uh, Deer Valley. Uh, so very exciting news. Uh, former Mayor Taylor, uh, worked hard with it, the ECRFA board. Uh, and I've had the opportunity to work for a couple of years getting this done. Do want to, uh, thank again, uh, Supervisor Diane Burgess for her leadership on the ECRFA board as well. Uh, also, I attended, uh, a couple of, uh, local events. Uh, there was a young man that turned three, uh, in, in Brentwood, and the Brentwood Police Department, uh, graciously drove by and said hello here in the city park over the weekend. And you should have seen the response that all the kids in the park, when they saw our officers walk up, it, it was wonderful, and I, I just want to thank our department for, uh, being the kind of department that we can all be proud of. I also met with, uh, a couple of nonprofits, uh, thinking about bringing some, um, headquarters in, into the city of Brentwood, and as of now, that's all I have to report. So at this time, we'll move into, uh, the consent calendar. Do you have a motion on the consent calendar, or is there any item that would like to be pulled?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would like to pull, um, where is it? B-three. And, uh, I'll, I'll make a motion to adopt items B-one through B, uh, um, B-one and B-two and items B-four through, is it B-ten?
I'll second that.
And we have a first and a second, a roll call vote, please.
I'll read the ordinance titles first. An ordinance of amending Chapter seventeen point seven-two-five of the Brentwood Municipal Code, Affordable Housing. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Brentwood amending Section nine point five oh, point oh-four oh of the Brentwood Municipal Code to update penalties for the illegal cultivation of marijuana. And an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Brentwood amending Chapter two point one oh, General Municipal Election of Title II Administration and Personnel, uh, the Brentwood Municipal Code to add a new section two point one zero point zero six five, Mayor and Councilmember Campaign Contribution Limitations. Councilmember Mendoza?
Yeah.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Hi.
Mayor Bryant?
Hi.
Motion carries unanimous.
Okay. Councilperson Rary?
Yes, um, I, I had some concerns regarding, uh, we're, we're getting three ceramic pieces. They're, they're quite large pieces, but they, they seem a lot alike. And, um, while I, I think it's great that we're, we're having different mediums of, of art in there, I, I really do think that if we're going to do some ceramics, maybe we could vary it with other artists um, rather than purchasing them all. Plus, I mean, that, it's seventy-eight hundred dollars for these three pieces. I, I would suggest maybe picking one and, and maybe looking at other ceramic pieces to fill in where those other two might be, uh, rather than just, uh, having all three of them. Cause they're, they are some of the top-priced things within the art.
Is there any further discussion, uh, any, any comments from council?
Um, yeah, I actually saw these and I agree with her, but I also feel like they look like anatomy, and that's all I'm gonna say. So I would be fine with one. They all three make me a little uncomfortable, but one is fine.
Any, any further comments of council?
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, okay, I, I agree with Councilmember Rary, I think. Yeah, three of them do look very similar. I mean, I think one would be great and hopefully be able to look at another two that are maybe really different. Uh, there's a lot of similarities though. Yeah, so I agree with that. That makes sense.
And I would agree as well. I, I'm curious about the criteria they use to choose them, but I would agree. I think one, one of that type of medium is probably sufficient, um, especially considering the cost.
Okay, is there a motion, or does our city attorney have a, a recommendation on framing a motion to move this item?
Well, we, we would need to pick which item if, that we would want. Um, so I, I think, um, I, I know that there, I, I think there's at least one, um, well, I, I'm, I'm trying to pull it up, and I'm sorry, I had, I went to go grab the, grab that agenda and ended up um, closing out the entire window. So let me get back to that agenda piece.
I can share my screen, council, and then-
That, that would be great. Thank you. And that way we all can look at it at the same time.
So it looks like the first ceramic piece that's in the descriptions here is this one here.
Is there any, oh, thank you. Was just gonna ask you to do that. Thank you.
So that's maybe the first one. We'll call this number one. As you get to another art piece here that's ceramic. And the public can obviously all see this in the staff report online if they'd like to. This is, we'll call this number two. And number three. So if the council wants to include in your motion, accepting all of the art pieces but for, say, two and three or one and three, whatever the numbers are that you want to exclude if in your motion. Want to see those again?
I personally would take number one, if I was gonna select from those three.
I would agree.
Here's two, and then we'll scroll up to one.
Yeah, I think what is?
I actually prefer two, but, um,
Yeah, I don't, they're all just, they all, oh, God.
And it's subjective.
It's subjective. Um, I don't like, what is that piece going across? Like, see that gray piece? What is that? See that thing? And then there's like something brown sticking out at the bottom?
It, it is hard to see them and not, uh, like at the size and, and really know what you're gonna have to say.
I don't know, Mayor. What's? Are, are you the tiebreaker there?
They are, they are all very similar.
I think number three has the less flesh tones, so that's why I would lean towards number three, cause it doesn't look like as much flesh. The ones with the flesh tones are just, um, interesting. That's very fleshy. That has less, like it's mostly white or beige. I guess it depends on the color of the person that I would be thinking about.
My, my personal Rorschach, uh, response to this is that, um, the two top ones, number one and two, for me, they remind me of, uh, coral, uh, that has maybe shipwrecked pieces on top of it. Uh, the low, the lower, the number three one looks more like a, a different type of, of, you know, evocation of thought or, or emotion, whatever. I, not trying to be fancy, I just, these are the words that uh, my art teacher used to use, and that's, and it stuck. But, uh, the, the, the third one here looks more like pasta with sushi on it to me.
That's why I, I felt like that's the least, yeah, that's why maybe this one the best, cause it doesn't remind me of anything else.
Um, but personally, uh, the third one for me looks more like a piece of art that, you know, you could sit and, and look at and the other two for me just felt a little dense and busy, uh, versus this seems more simplistic and
I'm fine with that, and I think you should make a motion because
Yeah, let's do that.
Not necessarily worth a huge amount of time.
Yeah. So, um, I'll, I'll make a motion to adopt, uh, the, um, to adopt B-three and, uh, with the exclusion of the, was it the first two, with the exclusion of the first two ceramic, uh, pieces of the three ceramic pieces?
Yeah, and I'll second that. So we're keeping the third one, the one that looks like sushi according to me.
And if I, if I may, uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Just briefly related to that motion, if Councilmember Rary may also wish to, uh, request that the Arts Commission consider replacement pieces?
Okay, and, um, and I'll, I'll amend that motion to include, um, sending this back to the Arts Commission to replace the two pieces, um, that we have-
And, and the motion, can they move forward with all the pieces we approved so that they don't have to hold those up? Okay, then yeah, I'll second that.
And we have a first and a second, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Hi.
Mayor Bryant?
Hi.
Motion carries unanimous.
Moving on to business items, item C-one pertains to the sale of the tech center, and Josh Ewing will uh, present this item. Josh?
Hi, good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, uh, thank you for your time this evening. Joshua Ewing, Senior Analyst with Economic Development. Um, joined this evening, uh, by our prospective buyer party, uh, John, Dr. John Kronik with Golden State uh, Orthopedic and Spine. So I'm just looking for him to pop up as well as his, uh, Chief Executive Officer, um, Casey Campion, uh, who would be here to, uh, address, uh, the council and answer any questions you may have about this prospective, uh, deal in front of you tonight. Um, great, I see him here and I see Casey as well. Uh, so thank you again. Um, go ahead and, uh, jump into a brief PowerPoint. Okay. So Mayor, that should be showing for you? Let's see.
It is not showing yet.
Okay, thanks, sir. Okay, how about now?
Yes, it is.
Okay, great. Uh, so this evening, we're excited to come back to, uh, present the city council with an opportunity to enter into a purchase and sale agreement for the, uh, current tech, uh, Brentwood Education and Technology Center located at one-on-one Sand Creek Road, which is a city-owned property that we have had in our possession for quite a few years. Uh, originally, the city, uh, purchased this property, uh, to create an incubator and later turned it into a, uh, potential or a, a city hall office during, uh, transition, and then leased, uh, a portion of, a major portion of that space to Los Madonnas College, who vacated and has since, uh, created their beautiful new campus on the west side of town, uh, leaving the city with an opportunity to create, uh, economic development along the Brentwood Boulevard corridor and turn this into a potential opportunity, uh, for private development and private reuse. So the building in total is thirty thousand square feet, plus or minus. It's on three acres, and it's part of this larger Brentwood center, which is a, a total of seven different properties and seven different property owners. The city currently acts as the, the primary property owner and, uh, assists with management of the dis, of the overall CCNRs, uh, using an outside third party. Given all the information related to the property in, in our history, we, we asked the city council on February twenty-second of this year to declare the property as surplus, exec, exempt surplus land per, uh, California state law and our current, uh, policy relating to, uh, city-owned surplus property. And, uh, with your direction and approval, uh, you, uh, directed the city manager and economic development staff to issue an RFP uh, and see what, uh, potential interests there is in- and see what potential interest there is in reusing the property. The property was appraised by an independent consultant for $1.6 million in fair market, as a fair market value in as-is condition. And that's the condition that we're looking to sell, and prospective buyers were informed that during the RFP process. So just in terms of lay of land, the tech center is located at the major intersection of Brentwood Boulevard and Sand Creek Road. We're seeing significant investment in this corridor. In addition to new single-family home development, we're seeing some national chains develop as well as local operator chains and to be able to bring some additional commerce and activity to the market. And we saw this as an opportunity to go out and see what interest there is in positioning this property for future economic development opportunities. So with council's direction, staff acted on your behalf to issue an RFP on February 23rd of this year. We toured the facility and marketed it far and wide between regional developers, end-user tenants, national tenants, potential office users, medical office users, local owner-operator developers. And we conducted many tours with various groups throughout the building in the building throughout the RFP process. The RFP closed on April 15th of this year and the city received five responsive proposals to the RFP. Staff then packaged all of the prospective buyers and returned to the City Council in a closed session of April 26 to report on analysis in price in terms of payment. And staff recommended that the City Council direct staff to continue with the process with one prospective buyer. And the ranking, as shown in detail in more of your staff report, includes a ranking of all five proposers that were responsive to the RFP with Golden State Orthopedics and Spine being your selected choice in order to direct the city manager to negotiate and prepare a purchase and sale agreement and return back to you, which we're doing today, to approve that actual agreement and finalize all the terms. Golden State Orthopedic and Spine is a medical services company. They're located throughout the San Francisco Bay Area and Northern California. They're actually a culmination of three major orthopedic service providers, and they've recently gone through a merger as of the beginning of 2022. Golden State, which was formerly Muir Orthopedic Specialists, operates two clinics in Brentwood, including an orthopedic clinic at 350 John Muir Parkway, as well as a physical therapy clinic located at 2940 Sand Creek Road, which is located in the Sand Creek crossings, Rayleigh Center on Sand Creek Road. And they also operate a main administrative office located in Walnut Creek. So as you see on the right-hand side of your screen, here's a general locations map with Brentwood being a player with two office locations throughout their regional network. So in returning to the City Council on April 26 in closed session, there were some things that stood out not only to the City Council, but also the staff in considering Golden State, which I'll walk you through and also introduce the prospective buyer to give their take on what they see as their vision and future in Brentwood. But just in terms of details, the buyer will be Sand Creek Orthopedics Associates, which we describe in the staff report as a subsidiary of Golden State Orthopedics and Spine. It's the same principal partners president that will own and operate the building. This is typical in medical, in the medical industry where a group of physician partners will buy a facility and then lease back to the overall network or provider in order to solidify their overall growth and facility development. The buyer will purchase the building from the city at an appraised value of $1.6 million in as-is condition. And then we would look to close based on due diligence and feedback from the buyer with a respective date of January 31st of 2023. There will be deed restrictions that are outlined in the agreement, which require initial occupancy of a Phase One in January of 2024, which I'll walk you through, as well as in January 31 of 2027 for a full build-out of the facility with potential monetary penalties should the potential buyer not perform. So we just wanted to let you know that there is a backstop in order to obviously have a positive relationship with our prospective buyer, but also have some teeth in the agreement should there be a potential issue with non-performance. But at the end of the day, we're here to support as an economic development group and the City Council with your direction, the prospective buyer in this scenario. So Phase One will include a partial build-out of the 30,000 square foot building with 12,000 total square feet to be used as an administrative office and an MRI services facility with the potential to add an orthopedic urgent care service as well, based on business need. What this would allow is 49 employees who are either Brentwood residents, East County residents, or from our regional area that currently work in Walnut Creek would relocate to Brentwood in this office. And they would do so by January 31st of 2024, and if not sooner, based on the ability to complete a tenant improvement and occupy the building for the use by Golden State. Once they're open and operational, the plan that Golden State has provided will hire an additional 30 new employees at the site in the administrative suite, increasing the total presence of 79 administrative employees in Brentwood by 2025. And then if MRI services are added, in addition to an urgent care unit, an additional 10 technical medical positions would be added for 89 total employees by 2025. And these would be all net new employees to the Brentwood area. So included in your staff report is a Phase One prospective build-out that Golden State provided. And this shows a utilization of the building of about 12,000 square feet on the east side. This will include a tenant improvement reconfiguration, building permits and various components to be able to build out the facility for a modern administrative professional office as well as a MRI and potential urgent care facility in this configuration. So Golden State has provided all their build-out related capital costs. And so in Phase One, $2 million is the estimated build-out cost, which may increase with business need. Golden State is also committed to exterior improvements in this Phase One initial occupancy plan, which includes a new sign, painting, and minor building improvements. And then they'll occupy by January 31st of 2024. One of the reasons that this is a backstop date and they may be able to accelerate their schedule, we'll hear from Dr. Kronik to describe that in a little bit more detail, is that they need some flexibility for doing the tenant improvement design, permits, construction, ordering furniture, as well as ordering and procuring their MRI systems. All the job and investment cost estimate at these phases are still preliminary. And I'd allow Dr. Kronik to possibly tell you about some possible enhancements as well to this current plan. Phase Two is the ultimate build-out plan. And this would include occupying the entire building, all 30,000 square feet for a one-stop Golden State Orthopedic and Spine Orthopedic Center. And that'll be done by or before January 31st of 2027. This will include 30 exam rooms, an MRI imaging center, a prospective urgent care, as well as all the medical tenant office suites. As well as, as I mentioned, there's two existing clinic spaces currently operating in Brentwood. Both of those facilities would potentially end their current leasing arrangements and relocate to the tech center building. In addition to all of the medical, technical, and administrative professionals, there'll also be 16 physicians and 10 physician assistants that'll be on-site here at the building. And the estimated total number of jobs to be located at the tech center will be 125 jobs. The Phase Two improvement build-out cost is estimated at $7 million. And as I mentioned earlier, all the job investment costers are estimated and subject to change depending on market conditions. And these dollars are estimated in $2022, not $2027. So here's a Phase Two plan, which shows a full occupancy, which continues to have your administrative office suite on the existing side with MRI imaging. And then they'd have a full, modern, state-of-the-art orthopedic clinic and potential physical therapy in clinic expansion space as well. The site, as it currently is developed, has plenty of parking to accommodate all the staff and patients. And we would review all of the tenant improvements through the standard building improvement and building permit process through community development. So I'd like to introduce Dr. John Kronik. He is a president and partner of Golden State Orthopedic and Spine. And he's also the managing member and principal partner of Sand Creek Orthopedic Associates, who will be the buyer, as well as his Chief Executive Officer, Casey Campion. John?
Well, thank you for allowing me to speak with you. I'd like to thank the City Council, the mayor and the vice mayor, as well as everybody from the economic development. Thank you, Josh and Darren Ricardo, for all your help with this project. I'm John Kronik, President Partner of Golden State Orthopedics. And orthopedic surgery, if you all don't know, is we do medical and surgical treatment of the spine and the muscles and bones and ligaments of the extremities. We don't just operate on everything to take care of the whole body. Golden, you know, Golden State Orthopedics just formed in January of 2022. Before this, we're Muir Orthopedic Specialists, Webster Orthopedics, and Ortho NorCal. A subsidiary of Muir Orthopedics, which is Diablo Orthopedics, Dr. Jasper Switz and his other partner, we're Pittsburgh back in the 50s, and we continue to service the East Bay. We're very interested in continuing being in being in the East County. We opened the office, I believe, in 2006, and we've kind of outgrown it. We've been looking for more space in roughly building the size. We want to expand our clinic space so more physicians can see more patients in a timely fashion. We want to have advanced imaging, which is MRI. And we want to have our administrative people out there as well as develop urgent care. Now, this building would really help us out with this. And I guess you want me to get back into, you know, what the structure of the people buying the building. So the Golden State Orthopedics and Spine is a medical corporation. And then we have in the, we have various different divisions, which is the, you know, the former Muir Division and Ortho NorCal. The ones you're going to be dealing with are the East Bay Division of Golden State Orthopedics. And that's, we have roughly 39 physicians. Roughly 20 to 26 of those will be investors in Sand Creek Orthopedic Associates. We're gonna, you know, hopefully purchase the building. The way we work the arrangement out, we have managers manage a building and we have investors. The way our operating agreement works is that you know, once somebody retires, they sell their shares out in that way that the entity still keeps going and that people who are renting the space that are members of the orthopedic group still have ownership, so there's still a desire to be in Brentwood. We don't, we didn't want to design it so we don't have, you know, old guys retire and are benefiting from the rent and not have, the people are actually working there beyond, so. Any event, that's why we try to keep it that way. We want to be here for a long time. The way we're gonna do it in two phases is for the first three years, we're gonna have an MRI there, urgent care, and a lot of our administrative staff. And then after three years, starting around mid-2026 or 2027, we're going to occupy the whole site. We plan on having leasing it. The orthopedic group leasing it for 20 years, so this is a long-term project. In terms of you know, benefits that we're gonna, you know, bring a lot of jobs in, and I'll let Casey talk later about that. When we purchase our MRI and our X-ray machines, those are major major costs, probably, you know, $2 to $2.5 million in the sales tax would go to the city of Brentwood. In addition, in terms of property tax, initially we'll be paying, you know, $17,000 a first year, and then with our first renovation for two, two and a half years, we'll pay $36,000 in property tax. And probably when we're all finished with $8 million of renovations, we're gonna be paying $105,000 in property tax a year. In addition to the taxes, we're gonna have our employees, you know, using restaurants locally and living locally. So I think, you know, this is gonna benefit Golden State Orthopedics and benefit the city of Brentwood. I don't know, what else you want me to talk about, or do you have any other further questions?
Great, John. So I'll go ahead and wrap this up, and then we'll open it up to the mayor and city council for additional questions. And thank you for your time this evening to give us an explanation of your vision for Brentwood and in your facility here. So in turn, just to do a quick run-through on economic development and what this potential deal means for the city in terms of your overall economic development strategy. It is your, the City Council's vision and direction to approve the surplus of the property and to sell the property for an opportunity to attract jobs or potential economic development opportunities. And we're glad to help the City Council through that process. This will provide 125 well-paying technical jobs to be added along the Brentwood Boulevard corridor, increasing our overall daytime labor force and daytime population to have employees here eight to five, allows them to spend time with their families after work and also frequent shops and restaurants during the workday. In addition, the opportunity to retain 49 employees in the community coming into Brentwood instead of Walnut Creek is a significant way to cut the commute and improve the lives of your residents. And with this opportunity, not only would you start with 49 current employees, you'd also add potentially with Golden State's expansion plan, 40 additional employees for a total of 89 employee, new employees working in Brentwood, potentially from the East County and Brentwood area in Phase One. This will also, in terms of a larger-term economic development strategy, prove the market. So by attracting Golden State to Brentwood and having them set up an administrative headquarters here, as well as a state-of-the-art orthopedic clinic, it signals to the medical industry that Brentwood is open for business. And it will help us in your overall economic development strategy to attract medical industry and related medical providers into Brentwood. And as Dr. Kronik had mentioned, the $9 million estimated in building reinvestment plus a $1.6 million building valuation adds $10.6 million to the property tax rolls, which the city receives a portion of that annual share. And as mentioned, there will be a large increase of a current city government-owned facility, which is exempt from property tax at a zero basis and which will increase over time as new investments made into the property. So recommendation this evening for your consideration, Mayor and Council, is to adopt the resolution approving a purchase and sale agreement with Sand Creek Orthopedic Associates and directing that the proceeds of the tech center property are deposited into the city's general fund. So thank you very much for your time and ability to get to this point. We'd love to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Josh and Dr. Kronik. Are there any clarifying questions from council to staff at this time?
Nope, no questions, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Then at this time, we will open public comments. I'll turn it to you, Margaret.
I receive no written public comments on this item. If you wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand using the Zoom feature. I'll call your name if provided and unmute you to speak. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. I currently have four hands raised. I'll go ahead and share my speaker screen. And I'll start with Danny Dorman, followed by Cinziana Todor. Mr. Dorman, go ahead.
Great, thank you. I'll be brief. This is whenever I talk about smart growth, this is a perfect example of it. We aren't building anything new. We're repurposing, for lack of a better term. The city is repurposing. The the soon-to-be owner, hopefully, has given a lot of forethought. And I believe I've actually used their services once upon a time, so I'd give them a great Yelp review as well. So this is a win-win for everyone. Thank you. So this is a win-win for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Cenziana Todor, followed by Rod. Cenziana, go ahead.
Hello, good evening. I am here to just express how happy I am to see that a business elevating the Brentwood Boulevard corridor is coming. I am just beyond excited about the job creation. We've been talking about this. It's a long time coming. We've been talking about local job creation for at least 20 years since I've lived here. So this is amazing. Good jobs using local resources, people who would cut their commute, period, and having enough time to spend with their family, spend money locally and enrich our community. Also, I am very excited about the multi-channel tax revenue coming into the city, helping us to elevate again the area. I've been part of the Brentwood Boulevard Committee discussing the reviving this area and actually revising the plan for the area. And this is really what we've been proposing, what we've been talking about. And again, it's a dream coming, you know, a dream coming true. So I am very, very, very happy. And I am very confident that this is a long-term business. It's gonna become part of our community, as Dr. Kronik mentioned. They have a clear plan, clear vision, meeting all of our city's economic development objectives. And we want to see more of this coming to Brentwood. So again, I am very, very happy. I hope everyone else who hears about this project shares my excitement and welcome to Brentwood. So I'm really looking forward to the grand opening. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rod, followed by Carolina. Rod, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Wow. You know, I come down here so often. That's how I got started, to say no to this and no to that. And I say no so much, people may be wondering, you know, what does that guy want? Or, and a lot of my friends are the same way, you know? It's like, what do we want? This is what we want. This is the best thing. This is, this, this, this thing looks so good. I think the thing that's most heartwarming to me is the fact that you're going to be bringing Brentwood commuters back to work in Brentwood, which is something that has been, bringing our commuters home has been something that I've been pushing for for years. And then the addition of more jobs, and as Cenziana was just mentioning, and as we know from Karen Rary and from others, that people, when they work in the city, they can spend money in the city. They can go to lunch in the city. They can shop after work in the city. They can, you know, they're here, they're home, they can spend more time with their families. It's just such a great thing. And I think that's what's really especially nice about this is that we're using an existing structure, you know? We're not even tearing up fresh land. We're just, we're just going in, we're taking something that's already there, putting it to a new purpose, an excellent purpose. And wow, I, I just am so impressed with this project and so happy to see Golden State Orthopedic come in here and make this offer. And I certainly hope the city accepts it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Carolina Villaseca. Carolina, go ahead.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. The three previous speakers were very excited about this project, but not nearly as much as I am because I have problems with my feet. And it would be wonderful to be able to schedule something sooner than later in Brentwood than trying to find something in Walnut Creek or really far away. So for me, this is personally just a chef's kiss. But having a business that comes in with good-paying jobs, like the ones in the medical field, and bringing home employees who would otherwise have to travel are great. Having worked in retail before, the more people that shop in a city, the better the assortment of goods that you get in the city. Right now, we don't, we don't have great assortments in any of the retail stores because we are a bed and breakfast. So if we have any other opportunities in the community for projects like this, where we can use an existing site to attract business, it would be wonderful. This is exactly what we need, and I look forward to being able to make an appointment soon. Thank you.
Thank you. I have two additional speakers, Ian, followed by Marisol Valas. Ian, go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
All right. I just want to say, this is a, like everyone else has said, it's a great youth city property. I remember like this, we were thinking of making this a youth center, but the new building we're on would make a much better youth center. And I'm glad to see more medical offices in Brentwood. Like I have special needs grandparents and more of the specialty medicine, like orthopedics, we can get into the city, the better it is for our seniors and all of our people. Like I have a friend's dad who just got a shoulder surgery done, I believe by the same company, Golden or Golden State or whatever they're called. They were called Muir Orthopedics when it happened. But I think that it will be amazing to see these new jobs come back to the city or these people have their jobs come into the city. So, you know, they can eat at like the taco place right there and have more of a better economy and local economy. It's a great decision, and I hope the city council goes through with it today.
Thank you. The next speaker is Marisol Valas. Marisol, go ahead.
Hi, I think everyone's already touched on so much, but I wanted to give my, my personal, I guess, experience. Muir Orthopedic helped my daughter so much when she had a back issue. And it's what a surprise and what a great thing to see that they're now with this organization that is wanting to stay in Brentwood. And when she went to physical therapy with Muir Orthopedic, she saw people there that helped her that were from the community. So when they say they really will help people in Brentwood, they do because there, there were people that she knew they're helping her on her back. And the other thing is their staff was so amazing that because of them, she's really seriously looking into physical therapy as a career. So this is not only great for economic development, but they were amazing to work with and really cared about the community and the people that they serve. And they also actually helped some of the local youth soccer organizations in helping the athletes learn how to manage their bodies so they won't get injured. So they really do become a part of the community. So what, what, great to see this happen tonight. So I hope it's approved because they already have been a part of the community and helping quite a bit. So thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional speakers with their hands raised.
Thank you. At this time, we will close public comment and move into council discussion. Councilmember Rary?
Um, yes, you know, this is huge for our community. And one of the biggest complaints that we hear about is the traffic, leaving Brentwood in the mornings and coming home at night. This will keep a lot of those residents here in Brentwood rather than jumping and commuting. And it will reduce that traffic on those roads. You know, maybe 40 cars, maybe more as time goes on. And it, it will help to improve the quality of life for those residents. And it will not only be a boost for that business center, but it'll be a boost for businesses throughout our town by increasing that daytime foot traffic. Statistics also show that people shop where they work. So instead of Walnut Creek receiving those tax dollars, our businesses and ultimately our residents will benefit from the foot traffic and the tax dollars will stay here in Brentwood. So I think this is huge for our community. And I, I hope the rest of the council feels the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mendoza?
I'm super excited, like everyone else said. Everyone knows it's my sister, Myso, who called in. She's not the only one who's used Golden State. My family has used Golden State also. It's a great facility with great providers. I've never heard a complaint from anyone who's gone there. So thank you for all of your fantastic service. I was going to make a motion, but I'll wait for Councilmember Meyer to speak, and then I'll make a motion.
Councilmember Meyer?
Basically, just want to say welcome to the community. I'm also, I share the excitement of the callers and fellow council members. And the idea that Golden State is also encouraging reinvestment and into the exteriors of the entire business retail center there. And I think it'll be a really good influence on the other businesses there and do some wonderful things for beautification, for obviously for economic development. And those jobs and those commuters that we all keep talking about, that is such a huge, huge deal. I'm just really thrilled to be a part of this happening in the city. And thanks to staff and obviously to Golden State for being willing to invest yourselves in our community.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Yeah, I just want to thank Golden State. I want to thank the staff for working on this project. Obviously, I know that building's been vacant for a while. Growing up in that area, it's a great opportunity for those residents for something new to be out there. But also with all the new things that are happening in that portion of the community, I think it's a great opportunity. So I just want to thank everybody for all their hard work to make this happen. So thank you.
Thank you. Before I call on Councilmember Rary, I also want to extend my appreciation to our staff, our city staff, economic development, Josh and everyone that worked hard on this, as well as Golden State. You're going to be a tremendous asset to our community. And I'm very excited to hear this opportunity. And this time, I'll call on Councilmember Rary.
The only thing I'd like to add is that, you know, we do do the facade and beautification grants. And while I'm not sure, I, I'm not sure if we have any coming up this year. But if we're able to have any funding for that or even next year, to have staff reach out to all of the businesses within that business or within that shopping center there so that not only will there be an improvement where Golden State will be, but just an improvement across the center itself.
Will do, Councilmember Rary. Thank you.
This time, do I have a motion regarding this item?
Yes, Mayor. As detailed in the staff report, adopt a resolution approving a purchase and sale agreement with Sand Creek Orthopedic Associates for the Brentwood Education and Technology Center.
Second.
We have a first and a second. We'll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Hi.
Mayor Bryant?
Hi.
Motion carries unanimous?
Wonderful. Well, thank you, Dr. Kronik and Golden State. And thank you, staff, for your outstanding job. And thank you, council. At this time, we will move into item C2. Item C2 pertains to the placement of a measure on the November 8th, 2022 ballot for a voter-protected open space overlay. And Assistant City Manager Darren Gale will present. Darren?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Let me pull up a PowerPoint presentation. Great. Well, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. It's a pleasure to be before you this evening on the open space and park protection land use measure. This is the fifth time, or sorry, the fourth time I've been before the city council in four months to talk about this. And I'm very excited to be before you to hopefully have the council move forward with the resolution this evening to place this on the November ballot. Just a couple of quick items. The goals, in no particular order, are here, but a couple of key ones were to protect parks and open spaces, to protect golf courses from future development and ensuring that we make the November 2022 ballot. There's two different types of land use procedures. One is a voter-sponsored initiative and one's a council-sponsored initiative. So voter-sponsored being a voter's grab, collect the signatures, bring it to the city council, be placed on the ballot. The other one is the council-sponsored, which we're going through. And the difference is, the city councils is not exempt from having to look at CEQA. And as a result, it was a key reasoning of how we had to put together our map and the overlay for this, for this proposed measure before you this evening. So the properties that are included in the overlay map all bear a general plan, one of these three general plan designations. One first would be semi-public facility, so large developed parcels only. Second, parks, and finally, permanent open space. The overlay language. Need to, sorry about that. One second. Here's the overlay language, and I want to highlight that this land use measure does not change the underlying general plan or zoning designations. For example, semi-public facility would remain semi-public facility. The overlay would place additional restrictions on any semi-public facility parcels subject to the overlay. These restrictions may only be changed or removed by a vote of the people of Brentwood. So while the SPS general designation allows for a range of privately-owned uses such as daycares and private schools, the overlay would limit that range to recreational facilities and those uses specifically mentioned in the overlay language. A second, the overlay language would not expand the uses permitted by underlying land use designations. For, for example, Steph recommends that the overlay be placed on lands currently designated as permanent open space in the general plan. That designation allows very limited uses such as grazing and habitat preservation. The overlay would not upzone these parcels to permit more intensive uses than are currently allowed under the permanent open space general plan designation. The same would be true for agriculture uses in semi-public facility land use designations. Permitting for agriculture uses in the overlay would expand the potential for reuse of the golf courses in the future. However, agriculture uses are not currently allowed under the PDs governing the three golf courses. Any such reuse would thus require additional legislative city council action. Next, the proposed ballot measure includes clarifying language regarding to allowable infrastructure. As drafted, the overlay would not prohibit infrastructure and public utilities, including sewers, storm drains, street and water supply storage and distribution facilities on lands covered by the overlay. Such type, such types of facilities are commonly allowed in parks and open space areas and already exist on some parcels proposed for inclusion in the overlay. A no-net loss of open space is provided as, as an exception that would allow for the provision of other public facilities, but only in narrow circumstances. The purpose of this policy is to ensure that public agencies still have much needed, can still provide much-needed public services without reducing the amount of open space protected by the overlay. These kinds of beneficial land swaps can be vital to ensuring that public agencies are able to continue providing public services. And, and finally, there is an exception for the city council to make changes based upon state and federal laws. This is the, the no-net loss of open space language. And the two findings that would have to be made is that the land that would be removed from the open space overlay will be owned by a governmental entity and used for a public purpose. And there will be no net loss in the amount of open space land protected by the overlay as a result of the amendment. As part of the resolution this evening and as part of the ballot measure, this is the map that would oversee the voter-protected open space. The proposed ballot measure shows the locations of the overlay in Exhibit B. The locations, the overlay, are drawn from the existing general plan land use designations for park, permanent open space, and semi-public facilities, where such areas are developed with large recreational uses. For land within the current municipal boundaries, again, in light of the time for placing the measure on the ballot, the overlay does not include some parks that are identified in the city's park. the overlay does not include some parks that are identified in the city's parks, trails and recreation master plan or the city's, uh, specific plans where those parks do not have a general plan designation. Um, in the future, it is possible for voters to expand the overlay to include more parks and open spaces. Uh, so again, the only properties that are included in the overlay are those that had a general plan designation under the three, uh, general plan, uh, designations that I described earlier. Uh, the proposed overlays is, is, uh, sizable, includes over a hundred and seventy-five parcels. Uh, the material includes maps of the overlay to identify the effective parcels. And we also include, uh, the maps broken down kind of by quadrants in the city. Uh, so, uh, uh, the four quadrants, you know, northwest, northeast, uh, southwest and, and southeast, and, and these are the maps. Finally, as a part of the process and under the election code, the city council may authorize, uh, the council or a member of the council to submit a bar, uh, a ballot argument for or against the measure. Uh, no argument may, uh, may exceed three hundred words in length or be signed by more than five individuals. As public resources may not be used for campaigning purposes, neither city ta- staff time nor resources may be used to draft a ballot arguments. Uh, so for example, uh, this evening, we're looking from direction from the city council on if you would like council members to sign, uh, the ballot argument. If two or less sign the ballot argument, no public meeting is required. Uh, those assigned to council members would draft the argument and they could have up to three additional residents, uh, sign the argument. If more than two council members, uh, this evening are directed to sign the argument, then a public meeting is required. And at, uh, a publicly noted city council meeting, the entire city council during a public meeting could then draft, uh, a ballot argument for the city council's, uh, consideration. And, uh, depending on how many council members signed, you could, um, include, uh, a resident to sign it. However, only a total of five signatures, uh, can be included, um, on, on the ballot, uh, on, on the ballot edition, or sorry, on the ballot argument. Uh, so next steps, uh, if it's approved this evening, we would submit the signed resolution to the county clerk. Uh, but these are the dates, uh, and requirements that we have, uh, for getting this in. The last days to submit the ballot measure is August twelfth. If for some reason the council did want to make some changes to the proposed language, uh, and they can only be minor changes so that we could come back, uh, on the ninth, uh, for city council consideration. And, uh, so that we can get it back to the register of voters by, by the twelve. And finally, uh, first, I, I want to, uh, thank, uh, the many staff members that worked on this project. Uh, almost every single department within the city has worked on this project. Uh, additionally, uh, we've had outside council Catherine and Peter who've, uh, been tremendous, uh, help in making sure that we can meet the timelines to bring this to the city council this evening for, uh, consideration. So I want to thank each and every one of them for all of their work on this. Um, so our staff recommendation is to adopt a resolution presenting to the voters, a voter-protected open space overlay, a ballot measure, um, at the general election to be held on Tuesday, November eighth. Uh, at this time, I can answer, uh, any questions and we have, uh, Catherine, uh, from our outside council and also our city attorney's office available to answer any questions that she might have.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Rary.
Now, give me an example of where a federal or state um, can come in and cause a change to this.
Um, Darren, I'm happy, happy to take that question. Um, the, the language included, um, as part of the, as an exception to the initiative is quite standard in terms of, of these types of ballot initiatives. Um, and the, when this comes up, it's when a property owner claims that the, uh, the ballot measure after it's passed, um, would affect unconstitutional takings or some sort of, uh, you know, make, make some sort of federal claim against the city. Um, and the, that this exception would allow the council to consider that argument. Um, and if they find it meritorious, make an exception, um, only the narrowest necessary to avoid the constitutional issue, um, or the, or the city could determine that that argument was not meritorious and not make the exception. But the benefit to having, um, this provision is it does provide, provide the flexibility in the future and avoids, um, you know, legal challenges, uh, to the, to the ballot measure.
Okay, and then for the city, what, um, I, that, this was a question that was asked of, by several residents. So they're, they're concerned that the, uh, the city can go and make changes with a no net loss. So, um, you know, I had mentioned that maybe we need to expand, expand a flood basin or, um, we needed to put a water pump to increase water, you know, uh, pressure and so forth. Are, are those the types of things that would, uh, would, the, the city would do that for, or are there other things that the city could do, um, that's? Can you give me some examples?
Um, so, uh, and Darren, feel free to jump in. So just to clarify, you're asking about if, um, this, if the city on its own, um, needed to use, um, some, you know, basically of the area that's covered by the overlay, uh, for a new city building or some use that's, um, not allowed, um, under the overlay. Is that, is that the question?
Yeah, um, and, and then it's the no net loss, so they'd have to replace it elsewhere. So what, what are examples of that?
Um, well, seemingly the city would, well, I guess I'll, I'll, Darren, jump in, um, here.
Yeah, so, uh, if the, for, let's say ten, twenty years down the road, the city council wants to build a, uh, any type of city facility on, uh, a parcel that's currently in the overlay, uh, then it would allow the city council to swap land, uh, to, to build that facility in that location. But then they would have to have no, a no net loss of any open space, uh, to allow that. If you wanted to swap land with another, uh, uh, local entity, be it a fire station, uh, flood control agency, a school district, uh, similarly, this would allow that swap to occur under that exception. But again, there would have to be no net loss of open space to allow that.
Okay, and, um, my mind just went blank, sorry. I, I think that's, that's a kind of a concern with some of the residents is that, that we could go in there. So, well, oh, I, I know what my question was. So this, it would require a general plan amendment then also. So there, there, because it is a public agency coming in and changing the land use.
Correct. If, if there was a need for, yeah, general plan amendment, absolutely.
Okay, and schools can come in no matter what, correct? Not, not private schools, but public schools can come in anywhere.
Correct. With a four-fifths vote of a school board, they can, uh, they don't have to follow the local land use regulations.
Okay, and, and we have no control over that?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
There any further questions, clarifying questions of staff at this time?
Yeah, kind of piggybacking on that, um, if we didn't have that provision, would schools be able to do that? Like, would a school just be able to come in and build, um, Darren?
Yeah, good count, uh, Councilmember Mendoza, I think there's two different things. So if a school wants to go out and buy a piece of property that we do not own, uh, they can kind of do whatever they want with it with a four-fifths vote. This would be specific. Let, let's make the assumption that it's a city park and the city owns that parcel. Uh, and so in order for the city to be able to make that land swap, uh, the city would have to agree to it. And, uh, you would have to follow the exception that's in, uh, the ordinance or in, in the measure, which states that the, you have to make those two findings, right? That, uh, it's being used for, uh, public use and that there'd be no net loss in the amount of open space, uh, that was pr- protected by, uh, the overlay.
So in this case, look, okay, let's, I mean, let's put an obvious scenario out there. The golf course is not owned by the city, but the school si- system wants to go into an agreement with the land owner and do us, and somehow or another find land somewhere else. Does that come into play at all?
So the, the no net loss open space, and, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Catherine, would, if this, if the school district wanted to go buy land from the golf course, that this no net loss policy does not impact that because they do not have to follow our rules. If we owned the golf course, that'd be a different issue.
If the school buys the golf course, even though with this rule or this ordinance or whatever that we're initiative, can they still build a school there?
If the school owned the property, yes, they could. They do not have to follow our land use regulation.
Even though it's open space voter-driven initiative?
That is correct.
Okay, um, what is, what, I guess I'm concerned with the swap and I'm concerned because we're five, I mean, I think that are, the majority of our council is all about open space, but if you get a council that's not and there's a land swap, what, there's no remedy for residents. It's whatever the council wants, correct?
Uh, so, correct. There's, uh, no remedy as relates to that specific parcel. However, uh, there could be no loss of land. So if, if that did occur, the city council at the exact same time would have to ensure that there's other property, uh, in the, in that open space overlay that would be protected, uh, so, so that there's, as a whole, there's no change in the total amount of acreage that has been set aside as part of this voter-sponsored for this voter-approved initiative.
But the location is different, right? So your neighborhood may, they might have a big beautiful park. And in two or three years, like the city says, hey, well, we need to do X, Y, Z. We need to move that park. So now they, they might not even have a park. They might have to drive somewhere else for a park if it's taken away, correct?
So, taken away for a public, uh, it would have to be for a public use, a governmental entity use, not just for any use.
Yeah, but I mean, some of it, I mean, they might not be able to use it as a park and it's a park today where their kids go play, but it could be something that they no longer have access to.
Not access as a park. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that I clarified that it couldn't, it cannot be just for some type of general development purpose. It specifically states the land will be removed from the open space overlay and will be owned by a governmental entity and used for a public purpose.
Okay, so this is where like, the voters listening out there, you have to be very careful of who you elect and make sure that they support open space. Because I can see this kind of not going the best way. I'm not loving this in there, but I mean, I understand that it has to be in there. And we also as voters have to be accountable to who we vote for and ask the right questions when we do so. So, thank you.
Be- before Susannah, I just have one quick follow-up on that. So the, oh, in that instance, the overlay is then amended to increase that no net loss, correct? So, so it won't be what was adopted, it will be a new amended map.
That is correct. The new map would include, would exclude the one parcel and add the new parcels that there's no net loss.
Councilmember Meyer?
Thank you. Um, I, I think these are really good questions. Um, I, I don't believe there's an alternative to, to doing the no net loss the way we're talking about, am I right? I mean, it feels like that's, that, that kind of has to be in there.
Yeah, yeah, we, we, we believe that this is in the best interest of the city. I'm, as you go over forty years of the lifespan of this, uh, that something will come up and, uh, this is in the best interest of the city.
Okay, um, so my, my other questions are, are just a couple here, but one of them is, how are we going to, um, educate the public about this? And I understand that it can't be something that's biased in any way, but how do we educate the public that this is coming to the ballot so that they understand it's an important thing to vote on?
Yeah, uh, thank you, that, um, what? So the city council, uh, what, so staff cannot advocate, say, hey, yes, vote for this, no, don't vote for it. However, we can provide educational materials to residents so that they understand the purpose and the impacts, um, of this, this ballot measure. Uh, we have an email that's sent out once a month to twenty thousand residents and we plan on using that, uh, that tool, uh, to educate residents about, uh, this measure. Also, staff and elected officials can always go out and speak to, uh, community groups, uh, to educate, uh, residents. Uh, finally, if the council did want to allocate additional funding to, to, to put towards this, but we believe with, uh, current staff resources that, uh, we can go out and help educate folks. Uh, we have a draft press release, uh, that we'll be, uh, pushing out if the council was to approve this this evening. And, and then again, I, I think one of our, our best ways of sharing information is through social media and our monthly, uh, newsletter.
Great, okay. And then, um, the final thing for me is actually just about, just to make sure there's any confusion over this. If you could explain why, um, we don't believe there's going to be a challenge to the need for CEQA. Thank you.
So, uh, I'll, I'll give you, uh, the staff and then I'll let Catherine jump in. Uh, since we are basing this entire measure on existing general plan language and general plan designations, um, and that short timeframe, uh, based upon legal's review, they do not believe that there is a need for additional CEQA analysis and that it can, uh, fall under a CEQA exemption.
Um, yeah, and Darren, you stated it accurately. Um, this entire measure was, you know, designed, um, under the assumption that we were using current general plan, um, designations. And because the city, uh, went through a robust, um, general plan update and CEQA process, uh, with this general plan update, uh, we're able to rely on that prior analysis and find that it's exempt under CEQA. Wonderful. Thank you. That's all I have.
Councilmember Rary?
Sorry, I minimized my screen instead of hitting the, the unmute. Um, one last question. So in the, in the case of the factual findings that need to take place, the no net loss and, uh, and so forth, can we add a, a third, uh, factual finding such as, um, a- as Councilmember, um, Mendoza had mentioned that we don't want to lose parks for neighborhoods because you do need to have, um, X amount of parks within reach of, of local, uh, of X amount of residents. And so with that, could we add the finding, factual finding that, um, they would need to find, uh, another plot of land, uh, to swap for the no net loss uh, in close proximity to, to that? Um,
So, uh,
so that we're not taking a park away from somebody on the, on the east side and, and putting it onto the west side or the north and, you know, moving and clear across town.
So, um, uh, so yes, you can always add, uh, another item for the findings. Um, I think we, uh, just need to, i- if, if, if we want to approve it this evening, I think it might be difficult to draft some language, but I'll leave that up to Catherine and Katie if they feel like they're comfortable discussing language this evening to add an issue, an additional item. Uh, but we could always come up with something. At the same time, I think, uh, just need to be broad, to not tie the hands of the city in the future, um, to ensure that, that you can actually use the exemption if it truly is needed. But I understand, uh, your question and your concern.
Okay, thank you. I, and can, can, uh, the, the attorneys address that?
Yeah, I see, um, Katie has put her video on, so I'll let her, um, jump in here.
Catherine and I will tag team this one. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I don't see any legal impediment to adding a clause like that, although Darren is right. We would want the opportunity to sort of vet the language to make sure we had it all worked out. And we probably wouldn't have that for you this evening, so this item would be coming back for your further consideration. Um, depending on how much leeway you wanted to give staff with drafting that. But I would just mention that considering how built out the city is at this point, including a sort of proximity requirement, um, may functionally mean that this opportunity is not available in the future depending on the location of the parkland to be swapped. Not advocating for or against the addition of a new condition, but it's something to think about whether or not it limits the efficacy of that tool in the future. And Catherine may have more to add.
Um, not much, I, we, we did actually consider, um, putting in language regarding, you know, comparable quality of open space. And, um, uh, ultimately, we're concerned that once you start getting
Uh, ultimately, we're concerned that once you start getting into those kinds of qualitative, um, judgment calls. It could lead to future disputes in the, in, in the future, um, and so. Uh, we felt that as a simple practical matter that the no net loss, um, acre for acre. Uh, was, was the way to go in terms of, of administering, um, this policy.
Okay, thank you.
If there are no further clarifying questions.
Yes, I could just make a comment, um, if the language that, uh, council member, you're proposing. Could be considered, even if we took a five or ten minute break to craft something. I think just the language that says we're practical or we're feasible. Would put the onus on the city to try to be as geographically focused to keep it proximally to the. Original location as possible, and that would give maximum flexibility.
That, that, yeah, I, I believe that would work.
Okay, great.
Councilmember Mendoza.
And just one question, let's, in the case that there is, like, we, the city really needs a piece of land to do something on, and there's nothing to swap it for. That then goes to the voters? Like, hey, we need this basin or whatever, that would then go to the voters when there is no land available for swapping.
Correct, so if the city council wanted to redevelop a park, and like, hey, we don't have more land to, to choose out. They would have to go back to the voters to remove that land from the overlay in order to, uh. Order to develop it for some other type of use.
Perfect, thank you.
And in addition, if it was a park, they would have to follow the state laws related to, um. Dispose, th- th- there are very strict languages, language. If you're going to change, uh, get rid of a, a park altogether.
Awesome, thank you.
Well, at the recommendation of our, uh. City manager, uh, how does council feel about, uh, taking a. Small recess and, and letting our council, uh, craft the, the language. Yes, I'm sorry, Darren.
So mayor, uh, there's another item to talk about which is related to the ballot argument. If, if you wanted to continue talking about the ballot argument, we could. See if, if we could start drafting some language, because I don't know if you need a lot of legal representation help on that, but. Just an idea.
That, that, that's clear, that's not clarifying questions, is it? That, that would be more in discussion.
Very true.
Can we take public comment while they go work on this? Is that okay?
Absolutely, we can certainly do that, and then after public comment and, uh, the I, the second part of this item. Uh, if, if we still haven't been able to do that during that time, maybe we can take a quick recess if it's the pleasure of the council. So if there are no further clarifying questions of staff, we will open public comment, turn it to you, Margaret.
I received no written public comments on this item, if you wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand using the zoom feature, I'll call your name if provided and unmute you to speak. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. I do have four hands raised, I'll go ahead and share my s- screen with the timer. And I'll call on Danny Dorman, followed by Carolina Villaseca. Danny, go ahead.
Great, thank you, um, and I don't know if this can be asked when you folks discuss. Uh, but, um. For me, I guess, clarifying questions, uh, when you talk about public land and a public entity. Uh, saying they need this land, are we talking strictly the city or can the county or the state? Come in and basically do a public version of eminent domain. Um, so I, and if that question was answered and I didn't hear it, my apology. Uh, also, with respect to the, the example given of a school purchasing. Private land, um, it's my understanding they would have to go through the entire process up to and including. Having you folks vote on it, so am I mistaken in that, it can be? Um, uh, the school district just arbitrarily and unilaterally say, hey, we want to do this. Um, with respect now, uh. Additionally, with respect to the school, if a school purchases private land. My presumption is then that piece of property also becomes public. In which case, how would that fall under this current? Um, arrangement that we're going to be asked to voting, uh, vote on, uh, on the surface. It seems fair and reasonable up until you start drilling down as to, you know, who constitutes. Um, a governmental entity, uh, if this is all. Yeah, uh, it seems fair on the surface except for the questions I ask, so hopefully you'll be able to ask and. Um, you know, someone will be able to answer, thank you.
Thank you, the next speaker is Carolina Villaseca, followed by Antonio Xavier. Carolina, go ahead.
Um, hi, yes, I, and maybe this was a- answered already, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. Um, how does the overlay affect? The housing elements, since we just went through that, that excruciatingly painful meeting, uh, getting down to the weeds. About, uh, what we need, where we need it. Um, and that we need some flexibility, we need that buffer, I see Karen shaking her hand, so maybe this is not a thing. Uh, the other question I have then is, is there, once we get all built out, does this go away? Or is, is it still in place? I mean, how do we swap land then when there's no land to swap? Like, how do we do that? Um, because if, if all the land is built out, either commercial, residential, education, et cetera. And there's no more parks, uh, um, how, how, or there's no more land, open land left to build on. Uh, how do we do that? I just, I'm not sure. How I feel about this unless I, I have a, a slightly better understanding of, of how these swappings go, thank you.
Thank you, the next speaker is Antonio Xavier, followed by Rod. Antonio, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you for your time, council, this evening, um, I have two questions, I hope that the staff can clarify when you have your discussion later on. Uh, the first question relates to the expense of placing these votes on the ballot. Um, I didn't see it in the packet, I'm not sure how this works, but can the city funded votes be limited to the regular election cycle? And exclude the special election costs? Or is that something that the city has to offer? My second question relates to the government entity land swap that's been discussed. Um, I understand that this is a concern in the future and we don't want hidden loopholes to be exploited. I love the suggestions and discussion we've heard so far on how to tweak that language. Um, what I'm asking for is, could you maybe give an example of how that same situation works under our current? Um, situation in the city without the protective measure in place. Basically, a compare and contrast with and without the protective measure. Uh, I believe a city council could replace an existing park. And there would be no need to protect net loss under the existing situation, but I would love if you could clarify this, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, the next speaker is Rod, followed by Cinziana Todor. Rod, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, um. Wow, three minutes and I have a lot of people, I want to say thank you tonight, um. When, when this first came to, um. Our, uh, attention, we, we were working on, uh, no reason for Deer Ridge and Shadow Lakes at the time. And we, we saw what Martinez had done, um. To save Pine Meadow, uh, down there and, uh, we, we had talked for a long time about. Doing something similar here in Brentwood to protect our golf courses and parks and other open spaces. Um, and, and so we, we had taken the Martinez measure and sort of Brentwoodized it, we got rid of some stuff that didn't apply here. And, and, you know, changed the language a little bit, but made it about Brentwood and. We, we brought that and to, uh. City council members, um, uh, Mendoza and Meyer and, uh, Rary, um, all separately and. Um. We were, we were welcomed and we, we wanted to, to bring it to the city to do it because of, with the pandemic, we couldn't get out and do the, the petitioning, but wow. The result is, is so much better than what we could have been putting out there. Um, I, 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 first of all, I want, I want to thank, um. The city for bringing in such an excellent, uh, um. Environmental, uh, legal group, uh, some of the, the language in there. Um, reads like poetry to me, the, uh, it's, it's very protective, very tight. And, and it's just a beautiful thing to see, um, I want to, to thank, um. Assistant city manager Darren Gale and city manager, um, Tim Ogden for, uh, making our group feel welcome and. For listening to us when we came in and talking to us and for taking this thing. That we brought in and just, and just making it, um, so beautiful. Um, I want to thank, uh, Susanna Meyer and, uh, Jovita Mendoza. Um, for bringing this forward, um, and bringing it to city council and, um. I want to thank Karen Rary for so many things, I, I, I wouldn't. Be doing any of this if I'd never met Karen Rary, she's just been an inspiration to me. Um, through the whole time that, that I've been working on no reason and no one else. Um, and so, uh, with that, I, we, I understand the language really well, I'm, I'm actually very satisfied with the, the way that the, um. Initiative looks, I appreciate the, uh, the extra time being taken tonight. Um, but I, I certainly hope to see this thing move through tonight and, and let's get it out there. And when it comes to promoting it, uh, my group will be very interested in doing that. And we are also interested in, um, working on the argument for if, um, if that's something that you would like us to do, thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you, the next speaker is Cinziana Todor. Cinziana, go ahead.
Hi, good evening again, um, tonight is a good night, uh, we only have positive things to look at and, uh, approve and get them. Push them through, so, um, I am very excited, it's a very good change in tone, definitely, and especially with this, um. Uh, ballot measure, I am very happy, I know it's, uh, it's been a long time coming. And I would like to, uh, thank mainly the community members, their bright minds, they know who they are. And, um, also the council member, Susan Meyer, for proposing this and bringing it in front of the council. Karen Rary, I know she's a big supporter of open space and, uh, also, um. Jovita Mendoza, she's been a, a great advocate for open space even before she even got on the council, so. Uh, all this work pays off, um, hard work, focus, so, um, I thank you all for that. And also city staff, I cannot be more pleased with, um, uh, the, the, uh, content of this, uh, ballot measure. Um, I think, uh, it makes sense for the, you know, common folk, so, uh, I really appreciate that and covering all bases. So, um, thank you again, and, uh, I'm looking forward to vote yes on this or whichever way it's worded. On ballot, so thank you again, and I really hope, um, uh, we're gonna approve this tonight to be on the ballot in November, thank you.
Thank you, I have no additional hands raised.
Thank you, uh, councilmember Mendoza.
Let me unmute, um, I think Rod said it all, we've. Been working on this for a very, very long time, um, I think Karen Rary is also, I mean, I don't know how, I know. Cause with Brown Act, they don't talk to multiple people, so, um, I don't know, but I. I'm pretty sure Karen's probably been talking to you because she's been so involved in Deer Ridge and Susanna for bringing it forward, but it's been a long time coming in Brentwood, we. Love our open space, um, I think a lot of us moved here because we didn't have open space, I talk all the time about how I moved from Oakland. They kept taking our open space and building and building over it, I don't want to see that here, so, um. I want to say thank you to the Alliance for Better Brentwood, I know they get a lot of heat out there because they show up and they speak a lot. But it's thanks to a lot of people in that group, and there's a lot of silent people in that group that don't show up and speak, that, um. We protect a lot and we fight a lot for our community, so I want to thank them all, um, they're fantastic, the, um. The warrior that she is, Kathy Griffith, has been an amazing leader and she's been behind a lot of this. Um, so, thank you to the residents, this wouldn't be happening without them and, um, I'm glad to call a lot of them my friends, so thanks.
Councilmember Meyer.
Um, a, a lot of what, uh, councilmember Mendoza said as well, I don't need to repeat all of that, but I. I really do want to thank staff for, um, working with the community members who came in to discuss this. And making them clearly feel very heard and respected and valued. Uh, with this initiative, I think it, uh, there are so many, so many people that, that. Um, made this happen across the board, resident council, cities, that all over the place, um, and, and like, councilmember Mendoza said for a long time. So, I, I just, I just am really proud to be a part of a city that listens to its residents to this extent and works with them to. Um, to help them promote their own quality of life and to help them, uh, build a, a beautiful city for their, you know, their offspring and everything and I, and I. Think about the, uh, the bills that keep coming up to attack golf courses and open space and. Um, down the road, uh, we'll have to see how this all plays out, but I'm, I'm just so thrilled that we're taking this step. To protect, um, what we all love the most about the city we live in, so thanks to everyone involved.
Thank you, councilmember Rary.
You know, this is a good thing, but it's, it's unfortunate that we need to create an initiative like this to save our open spaces. For the past couple of years, our state lawmakers have whittled away at our ability to control residential land use in our own city. And more housing bills have been introduced this year that could whittle away some more. Um, I, I've had residents ask, why don't we just stop allowing developers to build homes? Unfortunately, even if we wanted to place a moratorium on building in our city today. Because of legislation passed at the state level, we're not able to. Um, specifically SB three thirty, the Housing Crisis Act of two thousand and nineteen was signed into law, which prohibits. Um, local jurisdictions from enacting new laws that would have the effect of reducing the legal limit. On new housing within their borders or even delaying new housing. Uh, via administrative or regulatory barriers like a moratorium, so, um. I, I applaud everybody for all the great work that's taken place to create this initiative. I, I think that what we're doing will, will help a lot. Um, because it has, councilmember Meyer had mentioned that there's a, a bill that's. That's looking at if a golf course isn't being used, let's build houses on it, so, um, this will stop that. And, uh, and I look forward to seeing the language that's coming up and, um. And I also think that we need to discuss what two council members want to go on the bill. Uh, or on the argument for, um. Councilmember Meyer and, and, um, councilmember Mendoza, uh, both brought this forward. So, that might be my suggestion.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Rodriguez.
Yeah, I just want to take this opportunity to thank our staff, but also the community that, um, that worked with our staff for giving their input. And, uh, so yeah, I just wanted to thank everybody for putting all this information together. And bringing this in front, uh, in front of us to make this decision tonight, so, once again, I just want to thank everybody that was involved in this process, thank you.
Thank you. Um, before we move on to our assistant city manager, I also want to. Uh, express, first of all, appreciation for, uh, council members and the community that brought this forward. And staff as well, um, but echoing some of councilmember Rary's, uh, statements. It, there, there's, there's nothing more frustrating, uh, than, than watching the state whittle away at local control. Uh, and, and local open spaces, it's very, it's, it's disheartening, uh, having, having the ability to keep local control. Uh, as long as we can and as strong as we can, uh, is, I think we need to take steps like this. Uh, to, to keep our families and our community, uh, what we want it to be as residents. And so I, I'm really thankful that we have such a, uh. A, an awake and participating, uh, group of residents and families in our community. Uh, that, uh, we, we're just not going to lay down and let the state walk over us. And I'm thankful that I get to work with council members that, uh, actually do care about our community. Uh, there are communities and councils in state and in the country that, that don't. Uh, there are communities and councils in the state and in the country that, that don't. Uh, and I'm thankful that we do here in Brentwood very much. Um, so at this time, Darren is the, the, the second part of this discussion. Um, be happy to move forward with that.
Uh, so, uh, just to be clear, I've heard a recommendation. So as part of the resolution, um, or as part of the motion, please include what two council members you would like, uh, to be assigned to, uh, work on, on the ballot argument. And then, uh, I know Catherine and Katie and Tim have been working on some language. Catherine, are, are you ready or would it be good for us to take a little break?
I think we could use about another couple of minutes, um, unless Katie, we're, we're, we're so close.
We are very close. We'd like to have it all buttoned up for you. So if we could have two or three more minutes, then I think we'll be set to present something to you for your consideration. Does that work, Mr. Mayor?
It, it does. Uh, with the approval of council, we can take a five-minute, uh, recess and come back.
Sounds good. Much appreciated.
Sounds good.
A weird recess for five minutes. Thank you.
I think the vice mayor's in participants.
Thank you, Councilmember, uh, Myers for that. I don't know, I fell off for some reason. Thank you.
At this time, we will reconvene, uh, regu- regularly scheduled programming. And whenever council is, is ready, please let us know.
Hello again, Mr. Mayor. We have some language for your consideration. Would you mind if I shared my screen for a moment so you can all see what we've been working on?
Please do.
Excellent. So, understanding that the council would like... There we go. Can you see that?
Yes, we can.
All right. Understanding that the council would like, um, to consider adding a third finding to be included in the new policy LU 1-12. And for those of you following along at home, that's found on packet page 320. What staff is hearing is that you are concerned that our public generally has, um, an understanding that our various types of parks will be located, to the extent possible, within a certain distance from their neighborhoods. Um, we are looking here at the Parks, Trails and Recreation Master Plan Update, which identifies three park types we have in the city and identifies the, um, ideal or suggested, uh, distances of each park type from the various neighborhoods that they are meant to serve. So pocket parks are meant to serve the immediate neighborhood. Neighborhood parks are generally within a half mile of the neighborhoods they serve. And community parks are up to three miles, um, away from the neighborhoods they serve or maybe citywide. So taking that into consideration, and I'll share something different. We have crafted some language for your consideration that would add a third finding that would provide, to the extent feasible, if parkland is removed from the overlay, the land that will be added to the overlay shall be within the typical distances identified in the Parks, Trails and Recreation Master Plan Update for each park type. Because if something is taken from a community park, you don't necessarily want to hold them to the immediate environs requirement that we have for our pocket parks. Um, so we would, we suggest that you think about tying it to the park type that's being exchanged, um, to maintain that consistent expectation. That's just for your consideration. If you want changes, we're happy to discuss them, but that's what we've come up with at this point. I can leave this on the screen if you'd like, or I can, um, stop sharing my screen.
Uh, council member discussion?
Looks good to me.
I think that looks good.
Okay. I do want to point out, to be transparent with the council and the public, that we have no required or ideal distances for other types of land that would be included in the overlay. Open space and semi-public facilities carry with them no expectation that they'll be located within a certain proximity for our various neighborhoods. So this would only apply to parkland, which is why we've called that out in here particularly. So I want to be clear about that before you move on. Is that acceptable?
Makes sense.
Yeah, and, and that was the only concern I had was removing a park from a neighborhood. Um, and because it is spelled out in our land use.
Okay. I'll go ahead and stop sharing my screen and let you continue your conversation. Thank you for the direction.
Thank you. Uh, I also think that it looks really good. Uh, Councilmember Rary?
Yes, I, um, I had, uh, suggested earlier that, uh, Councilmember Meyer and Councilmember Mendoza be on the ballot, uh, for the argument for. And, um, another recommendation would be to go to the group, uh, that worked on this open space initiative and, uh, ask them to, uh, select among themselves three people to, to fill the remaining seats.
With, is that, is that a motion? Uh, is that a?
That, well, that is a motion, um, for, for that. But, uh, let me see, how many motions do we have on this? I didn't even look at, uh...
A really quick, Karen, do you think that it'd be good to open it for possibly at least one other purpose, person in the community that may have not been part of the initial? And two residents that were part of the initial conversation when it comes to open space?
These people worked really hard on this. Um, so I, you know, allowing somebody who had no part in it at all to, to be on the ballot in the argument for, it, it doesn't make sense.
Well, I'm just thinking if, if we are looking at, you know, I don't know if all the people that participated were one, from one specific portion of the community. And if that's the case, then maybe we want to broaden that a little bit for someone that's not maybe a part of one specific portion of our community. Uh, if not, then yeah, I mean, if it's, there's other people in other areas of the community that are part of that group, then I think that's great. It's just being able to, um, open it up for other districts within the city of Brentwood. I'm, that's what I was just thinking.
Well, Cinziana worked on it. She's in District Two.
Yeah, so if that's the case.
But I think, and because, but that's like the alliance. I think if we're going to choose people from the alliance, we let them decide. Because I, I think that the one thing I want the public and maybe you to know is this has been years of research. This isn't just two or three months. It has been years and years of phone calls, of research, of meeting with people in Martinez, Martinez to leverage their initiative. If this is not just like, hey, we woke up, like this has been years and years of research. So I think that you need to give credit where credit is due. And the credit is due to the Alliance of a Better Brent, for a Better Brentwood that worked so relentlessly on this.
Yeah, I don't think my, my, my perspective wasn't to not give them credit. I was just wondering if there was other people in different areas, like you're saying. If there is, it'd be nice if they were involved in it too, even if they're part of that alliance, which is fine.
Yeah.
So I'm not, it's not that I'm trying to disregard anybody's commitment because I mean, obviously that's to be respected and commended. Uh, so yeah, so I'm okay with it.
And I also just mentioned, I think, um, regardless of where the people are that are, that would be giving input on this, it benefits the whole city. And I think that's a, a, a bigger thing to remember. Um, it isn't, I mean, people from all over the city will be voting on it and that's where we're going to have that equitable representation. But the people that are, are backing the ballot as far as the language, um, I do believe should be the ones that are very familiar with it already. And again, especially because they're, they're from throughout the city and it will benefit the whole city.
Okay, uh, with that, do we have a motion on this item? And, uh, to answer your question, Councilmember Rary, there's only one motion required.
Okay, so I'll make a motion, um, as detailed in the staff report with the amendment of including the, uh, draft language that our council has provided to us. Um, and, um, to have, uh, Councilmember Meyer, Councilmember Mendoza, and three members of the, uh, Open Space Initiative Subcommittee, um, with them choosing members and, uh, adopt a resolution to place a measure on the November 8th ballot. Oh, I see. It's down at the bottom there regarding an open space overlay and naming the full city or, uh, uh, the following council members, Councilmember Meyer, Councilmember Mendoza, to author an argument in favor of the measure and a rebuttal argument to an argument, argument opposing the measure.
And I'll second that.
Do you have a first and a second? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Hi.
Mayor Bryant?
Hi.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, before we go to the next, uh, item, I'd want to let the police department who might be listening know that the sounds that you're hearing are not gunshots or fireworks, probably champagne pours. Uh, going off right now from...
Yes.
Uh, it's no fire, no fire hazard there. Um, item C3, uh, pertains to a resolution reducing water consumption. And Mickey Saboda will present the staff report. Mickey?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Loud and clear.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you for, um, allowing me to have the floor and present this item to you tonight. I'll try to make it, uh, quick, quick as possible. So as, as you guys all know, we are in the midst of a drought, a statewide and nationwide drought and is mandated by the governor as well as the state. Uh, they've asked us to look into our very own urban water management plan and implement, um, some demand reduction actions. Um, council is very familiar with the general plan. It's kind of the, uh, apex policy document for the city. The Urban Water Management Plan is a similar document for everything related to water in the city. So it's a rather large document. Um, like the general plan, it's up, updated periodically. It's also available on our website. It's got a, it's a great, interesting read for those of you who love to know everything about water. Um, this document does go into great detail, looking at our water supply system, um, water quality, water infrastructure. Uh, it looks at what's required for the build out of the city. And there is a chapter in here that specifically talks about, um, water shortage contingency and water shortage contingency planning. Um, the tap, chapter does talk about the various levels of contingency plans to implement from one to six. Um, one is the least restrictive, six is the most restrictive. Right now, we're in one. Um, the state has required us to look at, um, taking some demand reduction actions equivalent to what's called level two in our plan. I, I do want to highlight one thing in this, this document. It's that the water shortage contingency kind of looks at two things. It looks at if we have an actual shortage of water here in Brentwood and then what specific demand actions or reduction actions we should take in response to that. And even though the state and the region is in the midst of this, this pretty severe drought, what I do want to assure our council and our public is that here in Brentwood, we do not have, nor do we really anticipate having a water shortage. Um, again, absent any sort of catastrophic incident like an earthquake or a levee failure, um, salinity intrusion or massive failure at a treatment plant, we're not expecting to have a water shortage here in Brentwood. And a lot of that is attributed to, um, direction from council, a lot of good planning over the past years and our water, uh, we have a very diverse water portfolio. So we get a good, about a third of our drinking water from groundwater. We get about two-thirds of our drinking water from the delta. And even from the delta, we have access to multiple points, uh, in the delta that we can get water from. Uh, we share a lot of our infrastructure and resources with Contra Costa Water District. Um, it's no coincidence that our water treatment plant is located right next to Contra Costa Water District's treatment plant. So if one plant is down, um, we can use the other plant and vice versa. So we've got a very good relationship with our big brother, um, Contra Costa Water District. Um, but regardless of, of not having a water shortage, we will, uh, we have been directed and, and we should be doing our share to help conserve and save water along with the rest of the state. Um, so the impacts of, of going and implementing some of the level two, uh, demand reductions are already highlighted in the staff report. Uh, the biggest thing for residents, um, you know, a lot of it is common sense, just don't waste water. Um, to the, to the highlighted items in the staff report that I think are probably the biggest impacts for going to stage two is to make sure that residents know that they can't wash their cars on the driveway. So if you've got a dirty car, you need to go to one of our, um, local businesses and, um, utilize their, their car washes that, that recycle, regenerates, um, their water. And, and the second thing is to really make sure that if you do have irrigation on your property, make sure you only irrigate at night. And, and the second thing is to really make sure that if you do have irrigation on your property, make sure you only irrigate at night. For non-residential customers, and this is mostly for city facilities, so like City Rideaway or some of the, or city buildings. And the, the state was specifically narrow in their focus on this. They, they wanted to make sure that if there is non-functional turf irrigated with potable water, that needs to be turned off. So it's very, it's very limited. If you're non-residential, it's turf. If it's got potable irrigation and it's non-functional. So I do want to assure our community and our council and our public that things like schools and play fields and parks, all those do not fall under that category. And I also want to emphasize that we also have a lot of landscaping turf and otherwise in our city, both rideaway landscaping parks, some of our school fields, they are fed with non-potable or they're irrigated with non-potable water. So those don't, don't apply as well. All our documents that I mentioned, the Urban Water Man, oh, I do want to take a step back. There, there are, there have been a couple of bills passed by the state recently related, specifically related to drought and drought response. One of those, one of those, the outcomes of those bills is that every year we need to prepare a water shortage contingency plan submitted to the state. We did so this year as well. This is the first of, of many of these plans that we'll be submitting to the state. And it, it again shows that we do have a surplus of water. So in, here's the ballpark number. In a typical year, this year as an example, we expect to have somewhere around six to seven billion gallons of water, drinking water available to use. Now of that amount, we expect to use somewhere around three to four billion gallons, even without any additional drought response measures. So even, even without the drought, we, we only use about a half to two thirds of our available drinking water. In terms of our recycled water, this year we expect to have available somewhere on the order of nine hundred million to one billion gallons, give or take. And we use about a third, a third to a half of that. So, and we're really excited about, about that as well. Because every, every drop of water that we use from irrigate from recycled sources is a drop of water we don't have to use for potable sources. Again, the Urban Water Management Plan, these annual water shortage contingency plan, even our water quality reports, our annual water quality reports, these are all available online. I really suggest and urge residents to go on our websites. It's got a wealth of information. Our water quality information or annual reports or public health goals, these are, these documents are also in Spanish and available on our website. We will be doing a lot of outreach related to this item, using social media. We've got banners created. With due respect and apologies to our police department, you know, the, the police department is one of those areas where there is a little bit non-functional potable water supply turf in front of their building. So we've already shut that water down. So we'll cut out a little banner showing that Brentwood is doing our part to help conserve water. One thing to note that drought conditions will likely change. Mandates may change as well, and every time it changes, we'll come back to council and the public with any updates in response. That pretty much covers my presentation. I do want to thank council for their support of everything water related. Every time we do strategic initiative planning. And you may recall that one of our strategic initiatives for the upcoming couple of years is for the expansion of our water treatment plan, plant for the build out of the city. So with that, I will turn it back to council for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mickey. Councilmember Rary?
Um, yes, thank you, Mickey. I do have two questions. One, can we replace the non-functional turf at the police station with drought tolerant plants on a drip system?
We can certainly look into that. In fact, one of the, and this is, this is probably more for our, our private customers, our residents and our commercial customers. One of the things that council approved the operating budget, which included some money for landscape irrigation conversions. So we're in the process of putting that program together, but it basically allows providing credits for people that convert water intensive landscaping with drought tolerant landscaping. So yes, to your question, we can certainly look into replacing some of that landscaping in front of PD.
And, and you brought up, my second question was, can you talk about the types of things that you envision might come for that, those incentives to the?
Sure. The, the, the last time we had a drought and the last time we had this program, the, the biggest, the most popular item was really the turf replacement. So there's an application process. We, we go visit the site, we figure out the square footage of turf before we figure out how much is actually replaced, we figure out a dollar value per square foot. And all that is a, is a program process we're still putting together. But once it's available, obviously we'll go to social media and blast it out to our community.
And some of our city is also underneath Contra Costa Water District, like out in Shadow Lakes, I believe. We are within the boundaries of Contra Costa Water District. And what, what other parts of town are under that?
Right, so the westerly end of town, there's an actual, what you mentioned is an overlap. There's an overlap between city of Brentwood boundary and Contra Costa Water District's boundary. And in this overlap area, those who live in that overlap area are, they have access to Contra Costa Water District's incentive programs. I recommend, and Contra Costa Water District also has a great website, and you can certainly go online. If you've got any questions, give them a call. They'll let you know if you're part of that overlap area, and if you're sub, if you're, if you have access to those credits and programs.
Was, I, I thought there was some in the north area too.
There's, there's, there's a very small section at the far north end of town. That is correct.
Okay, so yeah, those, those were my two questions, because I did want people to know that they can go to, some people, some residents can go and get more incentive from Contra Costa Water District. So thank you.
Right, and I, I forgot to mention our, obviously our recycled water fill stations. If anybody wants free recycled water, that's a customer of the city, let us know. It's a very popular facility. Since we, this year we fully automated it, so it's like a gas station. You go through an application process, you get a card, and it's open 24/7 as long as it's not raining, and it's a very popular facility. We see a lot of folks using that to get free recycled water for landscape irrigation.
Councilmember Meyer?
Thank you. The first one, what is the ETA for the completion of the second water pump station?
Is this the, for recycled water?
Yeah.
It's, we're actually testing that pump. So let me back up. So the past couple of years, we spent, we've sent several million dollars on recycled water infrastructure. We built the three million gallon tank, installed a lot of pipe down Fairview and Sand Creek. And part of this project included putting a new pump at the Roddy Ranch Pump Station off of Fairview, I believe. That pump has been installed. We're actually testing it this month and next month to help provide recycled water to the higher elevations of the city. So right now, we have recycled water in our infrastructure to provide recycled water. It's about two thirds of the city. This pump, once it's fully operational and tested and running, it will help push that recycled water to the south west end and the higher elevation of the city. So like the Trilogy, the Deer Ridge, Shadow Lakes neighborhoods.
Okay, thank you. Given the, the lack of being able to water, how are we going to work with HOAs? Can you talk about that?
Yes, so HOAs, we did a, we did a review and we haven't finished it yet, but we know that there isn't a whole lot of non-functional turf irrigated with potable water here in the city. There are certain patches here and there, but we do plan to do a lot of community outreach, including HOAs, letting them know about these laws. And this is, this is statewide as well, so it's not just us. It's not new news. We've got a lot of our neighboring agencies implementing these same types of restrictions.
Okay. And it, it appears, of course, we're doing more with education than we are with enforcement. But can you talk a little bit about like incentives versus enforcement versus education, what our focus has been and will be?
Right, so we're not in the business of trying to penalize people, right? We're here for the health and safety of our community and to help implement water conservation measures as mandated by, by the state. So to the extent as we can, we want to, you know, if we hear about violations or this, that, water waste, we will do whatever we can to educate and outreach. And, you know, the rational customer understands the benefit of this. We're trying to help them not only conserve water, but they save money. You know, we don't run into a lot of customers that want to waste water and want to spend a whole lot of extra money that they don't have to. So in, in general, the response has been very positive for us. It's a lot of work. But that being said, during the last drought, the last drought was pretty bad. But Brentwood did a very good job responding to the last drought. We conserve somewhere between thirty, forty, forty plus percent water on a gallon per capita per day basis. We did issue over, I think it was over ten thousand penalties, but we also did over twelve hundred water audits, where we helped customers find sources of leaks and help them fix them. So it's a, and this, this incentive program, we're very excited about too. It's a good win-win where we can help customers save money and water concurrently.
And then there's a lot of discussion about development and the impact of the drought on development. And so one of the, in the packet, it said, the state however, still urges careful evaluation of all new development projects for their water use impacts. Can you talk a little bit about what careful evaluation would look like?
Right, so we, and this is for any project, regardless if there's a drought or not. We always look at things like general plan consistency, zoning, density, things like that. The general plan has already done a sequence analysis. Our water master plan has already looked out at the build out of the city and what water needs and what water supply we need for the city for the build out. So to the extent that a project has higher density, that requires greater review. To the extent that the project is large, over five hundred units, we require them to do a specific type of analysis, water supply analysis. But you are, you are right, and I think it was mentioned earlier on a previous item. The state has, has made clear that even though there's a drought, and we all need to do our share in response to the drought, we can't automatically put any sort of automatic restriction on developments because of the drought. That makes sense.
I just wanted to make one more quick comment, and I think it, the mayor should issue a challenge to neighboring cities for water usage percentage reduction.
We, we actually have. We've, we've actually, I don't know if Mayor Bryant's actually challenged, you know, Antioch or Oakley directly, but.
Come on, Mayor.
We, there is a, there's a nationwide challenge. It's called the Wylond National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation. We applied or we pledged this year. The residents can sign up as well. So it's not just the mayor, mayor's challenging other mayors, it's the, the community. So the more residents and customers sign up and make pledges and demonstrate how they've conserved water, the higher our ranking is. So nationwide, and this is for this year, nationwide for the population category that we're in, which is thirty thousand to a hundred thousand, we're in, our city ranks twenty fourth. I don't know if that's good or bad. I don't know if it's twenty four out of twenty four or twenty four out of a hundred and twenty four, but I can't find out. But it's telling me right now online, I'm looking at it, says we're ranked twenty fourth in the, in the, according to this challenge.
I'd still like to see a regional approach, Mayor. Just, you know, I think you should consider that.
We can certainly add that to the resolution if you'd like.
I, I would happily do that. I, I am so thankful and proud of our community and residents. I, I will happily put Brentwood's conservation efforts up against our, our neighbors and a little, little healthy competition to help benefit our community and is, is always good. And so I'm happy to do that. Councilmember Rary?
Mickey, I don't think you mentioned, what? We're, we're also working with Contra Costa Water District for supply from from Los Bacaras reservoir. So can you tell us a little bit about that?
Yeah, so one of our, geez, we've had several rounds of strategic initiatives related to water supply resiliency. This is one of the older strategic initiatives, and it was specifically related to partnering with CCWD so that Brentwood can have access, permanent access to some of the water in Los Bacaras reservoir. In particular, we're looking for somewhere on the order of five thousand acre feet of the existing reservoir. There've been, there are multiple steps required to do that. The latest step that happened was, I believe it was a year or so ago where we got LAFCO's concurrence that we can go ahead and proceed with this. It is now in Contra Costa Water District's court to work with the state to allow us to have capacity rights in Los Bacaras. So the ball is in CCWD's court right now to work with the state to allow us to have storage capacity in Los Bacaras reservoir.
And we've been paying on that ability, haven't we?
We, uh, no, we've been, uh, we have a CIP project associated with that, and we've been setting aside some money every year in anticipation of what that payout amount is going to be, but.
Okay, that, that's, that's what I remember is seeing it in our CIP. Alright, thanks.
If there are no further clarifying questions of staff at this time, we will open public comment. Margaret?
I do have two hands raised, so I'll go ahead and share the speaker's screen. And I'll call on Danny Dorman, followed by Carolina Villaseca. Mr. Dorman, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Oh, boy. Where do I begin? I'll just go out with the punchline. I think the way we treat water is a joke. And I had said it in my earlier comment that maybe seventy-five million gallons a month is too big a number to fathom. Now we have our water guy who, on the one hand, will say, oh, we're fine. You know, we, we have three hundred billion gallons of water. We don't need to worry. And then on the other hand, yeah, but we may have to take further restrictive actions. That is hypocritical. If we have enough water, then we don't need restrictions. If we don't have enough water, then we need to make sure restrictions apply all over the place. One of the common terms I heard was demand reduction. Where you, Mr. Water Planner, are to look at ways to help mitigate using future water. Well, son of a gun, if you build a new house, it's going to require future water. And yet you don't even want to look at that. It's nothing to see here. Oh, that's not going to impact us at all. And I'm here to tell you, water impacts all of us. And the sad fact that you and others who are so pro-density build out that you don't care about how much water is needed. And this day started off so lovely and had to end like this, where we have our water guy on the one hand saying we have plenty of water, on the other hand saying we're going to need to be restricted. On the one hand saying, yeah, the governor put out a drought notice. Oh, but we don't have to follow it because we have plenty of water. Hypocritical. I truly don't understand why it is so difficult for those listening to understand that. It's, if you want to help, let's see, I want to make sure you, I use your words. Demand reduction, then consider, when you look at a home, does it really need to be built at that time because it will restrict water if you don't build it?
The speaker's timer had expired. The next speaker is Carolina Villaseca. Carolina, go ahead.
Okay, so I have a better challenge for Mayor Joel than taking on Antioch or Oakley, which we know are in the same boat as we are, and we know the residents are going to do their best to conserve water like we are. I think he should call the mayor of Palm Springs in Southern California, Mayor Lisa Middleton. I think he should call the mayor of Palm Springs in Southern California, Mayor Lisa Middleton. That particular city has the largest amount of unpaid water bills, has some of the largest houses with lush green lawns and has some of the largest golf courses in California. So I think if you're going to challenge somebody for water reduction use, I think that would be a great place to start because they are way behind. You know, we could send them some nice Macaulay olives, maybe some corn from Brentwood. You know, just be like, hey, look at this. This is delicious. This is Brentwood, man. We rock. You guys cough it up. So that's my suggestion. Um, but I, I would like to, um, say that, yeah, I mean, Dunny's right. If you build a house, it will use water and that increases our water usage. So we have to be very careful with what, for the last twenty percent that we're building out, especially since some of it has to be high density or else we'll never make that, uh, housing element number that we need to hit. So we're in compliance with the state. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rod. Rod, go ahead.
Hi, uh, thank you. Um, I wasn't really planning to speak, but I, I just have to say um, that I've been coming down here for a lot of years, um, when it was in the building and now virtually. And so I've, I've seen Mickey on numerous occasions make presentations. Um, he goes about his job, uh, professionally. Um, he gives the facts as they are and that's what he is here to do. And, um, I don't think it's appropriate for anybody to be, um, pounding on staff the way that 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 was just done. I, I don't think it's appropriate at all. And I, I just want you to know that, um, uh, that myself and my friends, um, do not ever hold staff directly accountable for city policy. It's not what staff does. And so, um, I, I think that the information that Mickey gives is, is true. It's correct. And then it's up to the city council to do with it as they will. So, um, uh, that's really what I, I wanted to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I have no additional speakers with their hands raised.
Thank you. Uh, at this time, we will close public comment, moving to council discussion. Councilmember Mendoza.
Yeah, so, um, I think everyone knows I like Danny Dorman, but, um, his comments are just, just not appropriate. Mickey, you work your tail off. I know you do. So, and I think you're stuck like we are, right? There's a lot of stuff that the state pushes down that we can't do anything about. And water and building are two of those things, right? We've, we got to cut back on water and they want us to keep building. So if you want local control, where we can say we're going to stop building, then I suggest everyone who wants it on this call, again, call your legislators and get involved because we are as a city, I think, fighting as hard as we possibly can. Um, when it comes to the development, there's not much we can do there, but again, I, I think those comments were out of line. And again, I like Danny. Danny, you know I do, but, um, I think Mickey's just doing everything he can within, you know, his legal, you know, within legal requirements. So we're going to do what we're told and we play by the rules. And if we don't like the rules, we change the rules. And that's what we're trying to do. So those are my comments for now.
Councilmember Ray?
Mickey, I've got a question for you. So Danny made the comment, well, because it will be, uh, there's a possibility that we may be more restrictive later. Now currently, we're, because we have our own water system and we don't rely on, um, I forget what the other word was for there, but we don't follow the same drought level that, uh, that some of the governors, um, drought restrictions are for. And because of our water rights, nineteen four, we're, we're pre nineteen fourteen water rights, so we, we don't fall within there. When you talk about that we may have to go more restrictive, that's because, are, are you saying it's because the state has now moved its level of, is, the drought level up the ladder from, you know, the two up to three or four or, or even up to six? Is that what you're talking about, that we may have to restrict it later?
That, that's correct. So the, the state could certainly, um, in the future, if the drought worsens, mandate, you know, all cities take additional actions, you know, and examples could be things like, um, maybe restrict irrigation to every other day for customers depending on their address or um, not filling up their pool or taking other demand reduction actions. Now, the state is also, and actually they had a meeting today, talking about possibilities of, of curtailment and you know, stopping delivery. When you hear about these types of curtailment or stopping delivery of water um, to, to various water agencies, we are basically immune from that. And that's what we talk about when we say pre nineteen fourteen rights. Our rights, um, this, when the state starts curtailing water, they do it in terms of reverse or priority of water rights. And we have among the highest priority of, of water rights. So they're going to have to take water rights from everyone else before they can even touch Brentwood.
And, and Mountain House during the last drought actually was so far down that, that level of water rights that they were, they, they, their water rights were, were completely removed. Um, they had to go and fight for water, didn't they?
Yeah, I don't know what happened with Mountain House. I do know that there were several agencies, and these are primarily in the Central Valley. They were facing actual water short, severe water shortages, actual shortages of water. And as of right now, again, absent some sort of catastrophic emergency, which, which does worry me. And for those who are on council a couple of strategic initiatives ago, I, I talked about those things that worry me at night. And some of those things are catastrophic, low probability, high risk events. Um, absent tho- those types of things, we foresee, we have a, a surplus of water right now. We foresee having a surplus even throughout, you know, several decades.
And our build-out is at eighty-one thousand, approximately eighty-one thousand, and that we anticipate, well, we have designed our water system so that we can accommodate not just that eighty-one thousand, but also built it out enough that we could provide for the entire sphere of influence outside of our city limits, correct?
Correct. So yeah, our water master plan looked at infrastructure even beyond our city limits to be conservative. And one thing to keep in mind about water supply planning that goes out decades is it's very water is very dynamic. Water use varies by hour, by day, by year. Um, and a good example is during the last drought from two thousand to two thousand and ten, we were Brentwood as a, as a whole was, we were using a lot of water. We were using well over two hundred, close to two hundred and fifty gallons per capita per day. And then in response to the last drought, it, it plummeted to, to about a hundred and fifty or so gallons per capita per day. And even since that last drought, we still haven't really recovered back up. We're still around one sixty, one seventy gallons. So the community has done a great job responding to the last drought. I can certainly see our community doing a great job responding to this current drought. And that can persist on for many, many years.
I think it was back in the seventies, uh, during the severe, I think it was the seventies where the severe drought. And I mean, it got to the point where people were putting bricks in their toilets to, to lower some of that water level. They, um, you know, if it's yellow, if it's brown, flush it down, um, as well as.
Two-liter bottles of soda filled up.
Yeah, you know, put the bucket at the bottom of your shower to use that and, um, you know, turn your shower off when you're, when you're showering. Shower with another person. I'm, but, um, anyway, so there, there has been things throughout the year or throughout the years, but you know, during the last drought, when everything was brown up here, people were letting their grass die. They were spraying their grass green because it was dead and they wanted to have a green looking yard. But I go down south, uh, to the Anaheim area to visit my kids. There was, and they own their own home. They said there's absolutely no rationing down in their area. And you did, I mean, in the middle of the day, you see people watering their lawns, washing their cars. Um, and, and green lawns everywhere you turned around and, and, and drove through the neighborhoods. So, um, you know, it's, it's a whole different scene down in Southern California than it is up here. Danny, you know, you, you say, well, we should stop building. You know, why are we allowing people to keep building? And, and I said it earlier today and that was that even if we wanted to place a moratorium on building in our city today because of the legislation passed at the state level, we are not able to. SB three thirty prohibits us from enacting new laws or, um, or delaying new housing via administrative or regulatory barriers, specifically moratoriums. So we cannot do that. The density bonuses, that's another thing that we have to do. This is laws that are passed at the state level. The argument I would say for you is at the state level, you should be fighting them. Um, I've spoken with, I mean, Senator Weiner is one of the he's all about new housing laws and he, he looks at it as a one size fits all and he doesn't care. Um, you know, and, and I, I spoke with him and it went in one ear and right outside the other. I think he was Assembly Member Two and I think it was Senator Beal or was it vice versa? But I, I spoke with them in one ear and right out the other. And these are the ones that are creating the, the housing laws. Um, they really don't care. They just want to build housing and they don't care if we're in a drought. They don't care that, that you don't have the land mass. You don't have the land mass? Go ahead and, and build over your parks, build over your golf courses. These are the things, this is why we pass the open space initiative so that they can't force us to build on our open space and parks, um, and, um, and golf courses. So I, I think your argument is with the state. You, you want us to stop building houses, you need to convince them at the state level that, that that shouldn't be happening throughout the state. Um, a- and barring stopping them from doing that, we, or, or until twenty twenty-four when our neighborhood voices, um, initiative goes onto the ballot, people can re, uh, bring all of those uh, laws and, and get rid of them with that, all those housing laws. And so it's not just SB nine, it's all the housing laws that have been passed. So anyway, I, I think your argument is with the state. And, and I appreciate that you, that you're, you know, looking into all of this. Um, but our hands are tied. Our, our hands are tied. We cannot do a moratorium. The, the state won't let us. And if we try to, um, they will have a judge take over our land use decisions and a judge will take over and decide on what can be built in our town and what can't. So, um, tha- that's our choice. We either do what they do or a judge will do it for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Meyer?
I don't need to say a word about that because, thank you, Councilmember Ray, you just nailed that explanation. But I did want to bring Mickey back on for a second because Mickey lives and breathes Public Works. And I, I also, um, want to encourage people to understand the position he's in and that he's maintaining his professionalism and positivity throughout this entire thing. And I wanted to also remind everyone who did not read the agenda, one of the, from the, from the packet, a comparison of recycled water use in May of twenty twenty and twenty twenty-two shows an approximately seventy-one percent increase. That's huge. That is huge. Um, a- and I think Brentwood and, and Public Works should be applauded for that. I mean, that's we're, we're doing what we can, uh, but that is something that we should be very, very proud of. And, and Mickey should come back on and allow us to just give him a little thumbs up real quick. Thank you. Just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, do we have a motion regarding this item?
Um, as detailed in the staff report, adopt a, uh, resolution requiring further water conservation measures requesting potable water customers reduce usage by fifteen percent.
A second?
We have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Ray?
I.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Hi.
Mayor Bryant?
Hi.
Motion carries unanimous.
Okay, um, thank you, Mickey and staff. Um, item D one, uh, request for future agenda items. Do we have any new requests for future agenda items? Seeing none, uh, we'll go to the final, uh, motion. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Be, before we adjourn, I just wanted to let all the council members and, and actually the people out and, and staff to know that I will be gone, leaving tomorrow and won't get back until the next council meeting. Um, so just in case anybody's trying to, to reach me, my, I, I'll check my email periodically. Um, but, uh, I'm going to send kids.
Well, safe travels and enjoy your wonderful time.
And I'll, I'll, uh, make a motion to adjourn. Again.
We have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Ray?
I.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Hi.
Mayor Bryant?
Hi.
Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you. Uh, we are adjourned. And be safe.